Most of those were related to burial and death claims. When a veteran has passed away, a lot of times I'll go out and talk with them about the death benefits that are available. Sometimes if we can get a claim started on a veteran, it's not, I don't know. To me, it sounds kind of harsh, but if we can get a claim started before the veteran passes away, then we don't have to wait for all of the paperwork and all of the time and all of that stuff to start something for the spouse. And so, a lot of times I'll make home visits if I find out that there's a veteran that's passing away, just to make sure that we can try to get everything going beforehand. So, a lot of those are the home visits. Some of them are just people that, you know, they can't come in to meet with us on the Fridays, or they're just unable to get out of their house. So, I still attend the Legion here in Cascade. I did attend the Legion down in McCall, which is struggling right now to just kind of maintain their membership. So, that, I've gone to a couple of meetings there that just no one showed up. So, it's been kind of interesting, kind of the...
No one showed up?
Yeah, the hit or miss of when they're supposed to be in there. So, I know their commander resigned again, so that's, there's some struggle there.
Something that, you probably don't have any to do with it, but they could combine with Legion up here?
Okay. So, there has been that discussion, but McCall really wants to keep their door open. I know that there's enough veterans in McCall to keep that place open. It's hard. I don't know all of the dynamics of it, but I know in the last year, they've gone through, like, three commanders. So, it's, we've got the Legion adjutant for the Legion and the commander for this area kind of working with them now. So, see if we can't get, just get some stabilization under there to keep a commander in place, because without a commander in place, it's hard to even have a meeting. The Legion here is, I know I see some of you guys there at the different dinners. It's very active. We have our Christmas, the holiday party coming up. The Santa toy giveaway boxes are out, if anybody wants to donate for the toy boxes. And then, not associated with the Legion, kind of, it's kind of associated with the Legion, but not really, is we're trying to, so this last Veterans' Day, a lot of folks came to me and they're like, "Why are there no, you know, giveaways or free things up here in Valley County?" We found a haircut and there was a couple of cups of coffee that people could get. And so, there really isn't this support, this underlying support in the community. And so, I had a woman who works for a company that I can't say publicly yet, that wants to work on, in the future, we're going to do it on Veterans' Day, as kind of a Veterans' Day giveaway type thing. We're working together with some of the, Ridley's is partnering with us, I can't say that one. But to be able to give away, you know, things to the veterans up here to just say thank you for your, for what you've done, to give away hats and coats and scarves and food, and then whatever items that the people need. So, that, that's pretty exciting. We're going to do it this year on President's Day, because we didn't, we just weren't organized enough to do it on Veterans' Day. We kind of started not long after that. So, that is coming up, and you'll start to see more information circled out. We're limiting it to 30 this year, just because it's the first year and we're kind of grassroots putting everything out, but we're hoping that in the future, we'll be able to increase those numbers to be able to do more. So, over this time period, I did have, working with, it's a total of five spouses that have passed away and working with them on burial benefits, but only three of the claims have come back. So, we did have three where I worked with the family on the burial, as well as all of the, the death benefits that come with that. So, on the backside, I always kind of just go over what it brings to the veterans and the community, the new monthly compensation of just about $10,000, $9,974 as of the last time we met, with back payments totaling about just over $70,000. So, and then, last time I was here, we talked about the counseling fund that we had kind of put together and worked with some other members of the community to fund. And so far, we have nine veterans and family members that are utilizing that counseling fund, and four claim tiles. So, we're going to have those all the time. Any questions of me, or what we're working on?
Jimmy, what day was the Santa giveaway in Cascade?
I didn't find it this morning, so I can tell you guys later. I tried to get ahold of the commander today. I know the boxes are out, I don't know the date off the top of my head.
So, as far as our budget, every year, we give some money to the auxiliary down here and the veterans, but we don't do anything from McCall. I'm wondering if we can't, you know, balance that somehow and help with some of these needs as far as giving away free things on Veterans' Day or something like that, so...
That would be helpful.
We could use some of those funds.
If that's something...
Spread the wealth throughout the county a little bit, and I knew something.
Well, I know in the past, we have, we have offered it, but they declined any, because they just weren't meeting. There wasn't a contact person or anything, so if they do get themselves put together, I think she makes, she really makes a great point.
So, how would I go about talking to you guys about that? Send an email?
During our budgeting process.
Okay. So, for the next year on, for the next one on Veterans' Day?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay. Absolutely.
Anything else?
You have, how is it working with the VA? Is it, is it like?
So, most everything I do is through the Idaho Division of Veteran Services. That's the state service officer that comes up to work on, so he comes up one time a month to, so I start the claims and working with the veterans to collect all the paperwork and get everything together. And then, when he comes up once a month, he's able to, because he's the, he's the person with the signature, the signature authority, he's able to push them through. We work together on that first Friday of the month. And then, any of the claims or the benefits that are a little bit, they're kind of above my, above my pay grade, I guess, you know, things that are a little more difficult, then we work on those on that first Friday. And so, then, if I'm working, you know, like, for instance, if, if a veteran wants to get community care, I just, I know the contacts to get ahold of where we can have them send a message to their primary care to get the notification through the VA Community Care Program. So, pretty much, it just kind of, as long as they don't change their people, and then I have to figure out who the new person is, it works really pretty well.
Jimmy, where do you guys, you guys meet somewhere every month?
At the Legion.
Oh, at the Legion.
Right. So, I just, I have scheduled appointment slots, and as people reach out, I can just put them in one of those scheduled slots.
I can't think of anything else.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Have a good day.
You too. Bye-bye.
Enjoy those kids.
Oh, yeah.
We're going to keep going on our agenda. Our next agenda item is an action item. This is a workshop for continued discussions of employees transition to 700 South. Amy Street, Cameron, good to see you.
Good to see you.
I understand you have a guest to introduce to us?
This is my baby girl, Mabel.
Mabel? I love it.
She's my traveling padre today.
Can she hear through the headphones?
He's training her for his service.
It's one of those where you wonder sometimes.
Yeah. Surely hears what she wants to hear.
There you go.
Is she the same one that was at the conference?
Yeah.
She was sitting there.
She's at a good age where she traveled well. So, I have a, it's the copy of the memo we sent you all, and then, the floor plans that are, helps capture everything.
Before you continue, Abby, can you hear us? Yep, yep, we're welcome. Let's put a microphone down there. And then, could you hand this down there somewhere in front of everybody? We don't need one on that side.
No.
Trouble?
Trouble, we're not allowed yet.
Okay. I'll turn it over to you, see where it goes.
Awesome. Thank you, commissioners, thank you for everyone being here and continuing to hammer forward with this. I do have my colleague Abby Urkiaga on with us. She can throw things up on the big screen, too, as we need. So, I thought it would be good, commissioners, to just kind of, just step through the memo briefly, just so you have a good understanding of the process and whole and where we're at today. So, I will point your attention to, let's see, I think it's that first paragraph, excuse me, the second paragraph, although the first paragraph's important, too, but just to kind of give you a good overview. So, we were engaged in September to take a hard look at the Ameritidal Building and how to optimally move the four departments over there from their current locations. And so, in that process, we kicked off with a site visit over there, and then had each of the department heads and elected officials join us and walk that space and kind of go through that. And so, kind of with all of that in mind, it's been a pretty good collaborative exercise with everybody, where we would kind of collect that information, review some, some floor plan options, collect additional feedback on that, and then kind of work through that. And so, it's been, it's been awesome to work with everybody, and now with the full commission and our architect partner. And, you know, the overarching goal, I think, kind of that second, well, let's see, third to last sentence there is to focus on creating an efficient and functional layout that meets the department's needs while maintaining flexibility to provide critical public service. While the final layout will be based on a consensus design, the county will retain the ability to adjust staff placement as needed, anticipate that all the space needs identified by the departments can be accommodated. So, kind of an important distinction there is, we're talking about a floor plan, a layout, where you actually put people, kind of the integral design of individuals, albeit, you know, important, that's something that you can adjust, you know, at will, you know, whether so-and-so's in a, in an office or so-and-so's in that office, doesn't impact floor plan layout concept. Now, again, there's, it's not perfectly true, but generally speaking, that, that's, that's something to consider and make note of. And then, kind of just touch base on this timeline, because that was kind of discussed in the last meeting, and just wanted to clarify, you know, what, what this all entails and how the timing of all this works. So, you can see here, it's, you know, one to two months to create construction documents, so depending on, on the layout and the extent of improvements in the building, that'll take time to produce. It'll take time to bid the GC, so a month, two months to do that, and then, of course, to construct. So, you know, at best, you're looking at a July 2025 opportunity to even move into the facility. That's assuming you make a decision today to move forward. You'd be looking at a July 2025 ability to move. So, kind of just keeping all those kind of pieces in mind as you, as you move forward. Again, the idea being of, you know, you procured the Ameritidal Building to occupy it, so staying in the current configuration, albeit an option, I don't know if it's a realistic one, you have a building that is there for your, for your use. And then, just kind of touched the timelines. We talked about the, you know, the site visit, super productive, kind of gave us a really good basis to kind of, you know, understand the facility, work with the department heads, created the first set of floor plans in October 3rd, got some feedback on that, and turned out around another set of floor plans there, October 11th through the 17th. So, the, that, those updates were shared. And then, on the 17th, we met remotely as a, as a group to finalize the adjustments to the floor plan. And then, at the conclusion of that meeting, there was a complete consensus that the changes discussed would address any remaining considerations, and a final version of the floor plan could be presented to you all. So, there was a, there was a good general consensus there. But the key changes that came from that were to reduce the number of intake desks, kind of, there's too many, so that, that made sense to reuse and adjust that. Other feedback was to ensure that all chief deputies had offices, and then adding controlled entry was, was an important part of the discussion, and then modifying desk configurations and shifting some departments to improve the space utilization. So, it was a, it was a good collaborative, and all of that is, was incorporated in Option A and B. So, all of that was doable and was presented in those two new options in later October there. Got some additional feedback November 6th, and incorporated that, so that kind of created some additional options there with C and D. And then, of course, we met with you all. So, kind of, in that meeting, we kind of heard a number of things. It seemed like Option A was the most favored. So, we, you know, that was noteworthy for us as the consultancy to kind of see that coalescence around that. Also, just to kind of clarify the HVAC and electrical considerations, so all of that was kind of an underpinning principle in the entire process, was how do we minimally impact HVAC and electrical impacts in the design and the layout? But of course, you, you know, you're putting up walls, or you're creating an office, which was, which is the case in the current Option A for the Assessor's Deputy, that would require some electrical and HVAC consideration. So, it just kind of depends on how involved you want to be impacts of that.
Look, Cameron, like, I see all the cubicles out in the middle of the world there. Each one of those can make power. So, basement floor, is it laying ceiling like these? Say the basement. Now, the prosecutors are. So, we have total access to that whole floor upstairs, putting in floor outlets throughout and data throughout this whole place.
Yeah, so, great question, great point, Neil. For the most part, and actually, you know what? Can we, we hold on that, because that's a, that's an important point, and we'll show that once we get to the floor plans. But, yeah, we can talk about, generally speaking, what, what the impacts of HVAC and electrical are on the, on the floor. Yeah, let's, let's end that, if that's okay. We'll get to that. So, and then, just to clarify, the architect or the costs of, you know, certain things, want to make sure that, you know, we're tracking that budget tightly, so we don't anticipate unless there's something dramatically different, or that, you know, takes a lot more time that we'll, we'll exceed the project budget. So, just want, want you all to fill or be clear on that. But, that being said, that may not be the case for a future project cost. So, if you add additional walls, or you, you know, do certain things, that could increase the construction element of it, and therefore the cost. And then, just kind of this point here, while most of the design elements provided by the consultancy will not incur additional costs, certain elements in Option A and the renderings by the departments may result in additional expenses. So, and the example we use is the Assessor's Deputy office, if you're going to put walls up and have to have air to it and heat to it and electric to it. It is important to note, too, even in the, the no construction options that we shared in your packet, there are, there are costs that would be needed. So, for example, the bathroom needs ADA handrails and things like that. So, there, there is a cost to any scenario from a construction perspective and a code compliance perspective. But definitely, that varies, right? So, with what we shared there was as minimal a floor plan as possible with the existing space, including demo. So, you can kind of consider that as like your least expensive option, and then everything would be a moving target from there on. And then, privacy and cubicles, so there was some discussion about this. It's important to note that, again, the layout is different than what actually is put into use for projects. So, for example, the layout isn't dictating what height of cubicle wall you have. So, want to make that clear, that you can approve the layout and then implement whatever type of cubicle structure you would like. So, for example, if privacy is a concern, then by all means, don't implement a, you know, a waist-high cubicle wall, implement something that's higher, or maybe even to the ceiling. If lighting, for example, is a concern, then make sure that that top, you know, whatever fourth of the cube wall is glass or transparent, so you can get more light circulation. But again, that does not impact the layout of what you decide to proceed with. So, just kind of making that distinction, there's the ability to produce privacy without significant change to the layout.
Is the, I haven't been at upstairs. Is upstairs grid ceiling, or is upstairs hard deck?
It's grid ceiling.
Yeah. Stairs is grid ceiling.
So, that kind of gets to your earlier point, and we'll touch that.
Cameron, when you're saying clear to the ceiling, we wouldn't want all of these things going clear to the ceiling, because it will impact all of the air movement within the building.
Yes. So, again, that's kind of, kind of the trade-off, right? So, you may not want it waist-high, but you may not want it all the way, depends on...
Like, some of those down there in the clerk's office there, they're like six foot tall, and they have a set of cabinets across them, just different spots, but they, tallest one's like six foot. And here, you got another, you got four foot of space above it.
The ceilings are very high in that building, probably twelve foot at least. Yeah, so, it wouldn't be feasible to do cubicles all the way to the ceiling. That's not what any of us want. I think he was using it as an example, that the cubicle height is not part of the architecture. It's our choice in purchasing equipment after the fact. We're just planning for electrical.
Cameron, do you have the plans, original plans of that building as far as the electrical?
We do.
You have that? So, you can look at, as far as we have enough amperage in a box to handle six more circuits or whatever.
Great, great point. And that, promise, we'll, we'll talk a little bit more about that, that kind of, those questions bode together. So, that kind of, you know, concludes that. Again, just kind of the reiteration of, you know, this has been highly collaborative, and appreciate everybody's time and feedback. I think at times, it can be kind of gritty, and there's, again, and that's important and valuable, but it's been cool to kind of see, generally, we're, we're moving in the right direction, getting to something that's workable for everybody. And I would, and I would say for future consideration, right? So, this is not just today and now, it's the MFP and future, future growth of it. So, I mean, I think, obviously, this wasn't contemplating the department's Thursday meeting and their discussion there, sounds like that was very productive. Again, just want to make sure we're helping the county make good decisions, and said this, probably it's a broken record for everybody, it's like, you can get 80, 90% of something that is workable and we're happy with that, then you're, it's actually probably a really good plan. Get to 100%, I think is...
We want 100%.
Okay, well, let's get there, as close as we can.
And Cameron, I will say, after our meeting on Thursday, I think everybody is 100% happy. And you had, you said it very good.
I walked away feeling very good.
Were you involved with that?
Nope, we were not.
You haven't heard that? So, I guess that's where I'd like to go next, is either one, whoever wants to lead that discussion, kind of what you guys have come up with.
And then, you can... Abby can share it as well.
We emailed it, it looks like it's the last page in the memo as well. But Thursday, I mean...
Abby, can you put that up to the big screen? Thank you.
So, Thursday, we printed out a copy of the floor plan and sat down in the room here, all four of us, and took sticky notes, and I made a list here of what every department needs, what they feel is lacking, and what our concerns are moving forward. And by the end of it, I'm just going to, spoiler, spoiler alert, by the end of it, all four of us walked away 100% happy. So, we kind of started with the idea that we didn't want to spend a bunch of time in the weeds in a commissioner meeting, wasting everyone's time. So, we had the goal of getting into the weeds in this group, so talking about cubicles, talking about noise, talking about different departments' busy times, and when is a good time to move, and when isn't a good time to move, and all of those particular details that needed to be hashed out. It was actually the first time the four of us had sat in a room and actually talked about this project. So, that was very productive in the sense that it was the first time we'd actually done that. And after listening to the discussion with the other commissioners last week, we, you know, a few ideas had kind of triggered in our brains. And Elt had made a comment saying that, "Well, you know, maybe we're trying to squeeze too many people into this space." And so, then, I think each of us went through the different scenarios of, "Oh, well, we put less people over there," or "What's, what's an effective way to move people over into this space?" And the, the solution that we would like to propose is that the Treasurer's Office doesn't actually move to the new Ameritidal Building, and the other three departments move and fill that space. And this gives them each adequate space to operate their departments, but also space to grow into the future if necessary. One of the other major considerations, considerations with this configuration is the need for security and transporting money back and forth. So, with the Treasurer's Office here at the Ameritidal Building, it would definitely be a requirement that we have security on-site, because we're processing. Here, next week, we'll be processing a million dollars a day. And also, we move money back and forth between the clerk's office and the Treasurer's Office often. And also, we move money back and forth between clerk's office and treasurer's office. But if we remove the treasurer's office from this equation and keep us here under the security that's already in the courthouse, then we need to remove that, the higher security. We also had lots of other needs that weren't quite being met, like a dedicated meeting space for planning and zoning. You know, if, if you look at the current planning and zoning configuration, they have a very large table where they can spread out their plots and talk with different developers and have multiple projects going at one time, because they're never, never slow enough to only have one thing to work on at a time. And this option provides plenty of room for that to be able to happen as well. And then one of the other big considerations is the tight space with the appraisers and them being in a small space and having a lot of them there. This configuration actually allows them to spread out a little bit more and to remove that maybe distraction of people working in the open space that are in different departments. So if you have all appraisers and assessor employees in that open space, you have less distraction for, you know, say the treasurer's office trying to operate in the same space or the building department can operate in the same space. Were there any other needs that I missed?
I think the big one that I see, and I like, is where you place DMV. You're going to go into the front door and DMV is going to be on your right. That's where you get a lot of people coming in.
Yes, so that is the shortest distance from the front door and I, I think that's going to be important. Johanna touched on the less of a need of security. I, I think it would still be nice to have someone at that reception desk that, that either, I mean, obviously they, maybe they could have more responsibility than just directing people. And they wouldn't have to be a deputy because I, as I understand it, the jailers can work in the courthouse, they just can't go off campus, is what I was told.
We'll have to talk to the sheriff about that.
Yeah, and so, you know, we could still perhaps make an appearance of security there, but it wouldn't have to necessarily be a patrol deputy, because that's going to put a hardship on the sheriff, trying to man two different buildings, because there's requirements he has to, he has to abide by.
So how do you guys see in that work and that front desk, that initial contact, is that going to be a revolving person?
I, I don't, I'm not sure what that looks like yet. That person can certainly direct people of where to go, manage the waiting area, let people, let people know that, let people know that, you know, there's several people in the DMV, just hold on until maybe a couple of people come out. Cameron, I see you guys kind of changed the desk formation on the DMV stuff. I, I think I liked the other way better, but those are just, those are, that's something we can talk about later. First of all, I guess we just need to kind of get the floor plan kind of through, really.
So Cameron, is that, are these walls a constructed wall? Let's see, quarter mile, we've got to go through here. These aren't in place today, are they?
They're not, nope, that's open.
So this will be constructed?
It could be, you could, you could do it via kind of like a local wall, but then again, we're kind of suggesting that they be built.
Yeah, I think that needs to be built. How does that impact heating and cooling though, if they go clear to the ceiling? That was the whole consideration was doing it, you know, so that they would be movable.
We have intakes, so we, we would need...
Be the, some of the taller...
These are all, these are all fixed.
Yeah, so the offices are already in place there, yeah.
Some way around from there, those are all fixed.
If we did them as movable walls, you'd be able to reconfigure the space, you know, if need be into the future.
That is true.
And going clear to the ceiling, you're impacting heating and cooling needs.
Well, sure you are.
No, I don't think any of us want floor ceiling walls. Anything, it would be like a half wall, like you can do it solid. So you can let light in over the top, but you can see over the top.
And you guys would be okay with that, because you've got two different departments there.
And really, there's three. You guys are okay with DMV being, because this one doesn't push it back into that room at all, it's out front?
Right, it's just up front.
The holding department is probably going to get most impacted with the noise of DMV. So where is the front part? It's open there. Unless they don't have to come down the hall.
Right, so the controlled door on the side, it's just kind of a, it's, it's an exit for employees, make it a little safer, because they don't really like not having an exit. I like the way that Cameron's people did the counter across the front, and if people do need to wait, they can just wait right there in the waiting area as they first enter the building. That way, and that eliminates the need for moving walls and expensive construction, not to mention the time that it will take, you know, to get that done.
You guys also talked to about when you come in behind reception, that bathroom, do we have to have that bathroom? Because there's not a bathroom there now, I think it's just one...
It's there.
We would highly recommend that you have that bathroom there, for sure.
I remember.
Yep, that's the only public use bathroom in this, and it is there already.
So then we don't, we don't have that.
Right.
I would add, oh, just real quick, I would add that everything that the, the group has come up with here is doable. That's really just kind of a, you know, puzzle piece kind of exercise, so that's all doable. I think if understanding it correctly, and I may not be, but really the main difference is just not having the treasurer on campus. So the thought there is the treasurer would remain here, and, you know, what is that? For building and...
Well, and that was the other thing that I appreciate Johanna bringing up, because I never thought about it, is there's going to be a lot of times when you guys are bringing in a deposit. So that's going to be where a security risk is, is somebody driving there, Doug's office or, you know, and I don't want to state anything here on a public hearing, but we do, but those are issues that we have to look at as far as making sure we're safe for that employee. So there might be some further ideas that we need to talk to on those big deposit days and maybe get deputies. It's not a long...
That won't be a need.
Well, but what about your DMV, is that a big cash-out lead?
It, it's not anything close to what, what she handles. We talked about a couple of different options of DMV employee transporting and dropping off at the end of the day, you know, that person leave a little early and drop it off to the clerk's office.
Do you get a lot of cash or checks at DMV?
We can, we can do this as a security meeting later, too.
Well, I'm thinking, you know...
Not, there isn't very much cash.
A credit card only kind of an option.
These three departments are the lowest cash handling departments, it's mostly credit card or electronic things.
So to me, this looks like the way to go with the treasurer. I might still hope that we'll come back into this facility later on and do some remodeling, some changes with this, especially the downstairs floor, because that's going to create a lot of office space for the future, but also for sheriff's department if they need more space, which I think they do, they can have some offices downstairs here as well. We still haven't done anything as far as HR, recreation, where are those folks going to go? And I think that'll be a pretty easy decision. I'm assuming HR's going to stay here in the office it's in, but we need to make sure we remember those folks that run that north end.
And Johanna, we need to figure out whatever it is in your office that you need. I know you said that there were some electrical issues in there, so if you're not going down there, we need to fix the needs that you have here, you know, make this fully functioning.
Yeah, we attempted to turn on a space heater this morning, the breaker.
Your little pellet stove in there.
I actually have a propane fire, like fire pit that I've thought about bringing to work, either that or wearing my snowsuit.
Could you, could you put in a ticket with Scott? Let's just get that taken care of, because that's, you know, we don't, even all winter long, you don't need to freeze anyway, so. So talking timeline, none of these divisions are going to be available to move in July. I mean, that would be really difficult in the middle of summer for any of them. I'm speaking for you, so if that's not true, please stop me.
We, we could make it work in July, just not June.
Yeah, that's true.
We could make it work in July, because it's just a matter, I mean, we'll be packing throughout the winter and everything or, and organizing. And it's just a matter, you said you're going to hire somebody. We'd probably have to hire a packing company. Moving, we'd probably have to hire a moving company. And they just move it down and, I mean, I've experienced a move before and you just work through it. And we did it in July, I believe.
Well, my biggest concern with June, of course, is when you're collecting taxes, but you're not even moving, so that's not going to be an issue. Any concerns in building department?
Rather not move.
Would you rather move earlier?
Yeah, it'd be great, but I don't know that, I'm hearing we're going to get there, unless there's a way to shortcut some of that timing.
I think we decided May was the best.
May would be better, yeah.
Well, I kind of, I think it kind of depends on Cameron. We get the building at the end of February, is that correct?
Jeremy's got to have time to...
So we have March, April, May to clean up, do whatever needs to be done construction-wise. I mean, if we got, you know, shovel-ready by March 1, you could, you could get a lot done.
And I don't know that we're going to have a lot of construction grinds. I mean, and even as a general contractor, I mean, really, it's, it's electrical needs for the most part. And then just buying the removable walls.
There are a lot of it, it's just going in there with duct tape, putting that on the floor, seriously, putting that on the floor.
True.
So that the guys that are doing the heating and air and electrical, they'd say, okay, this is where we need our, our outlets and not have that cubicle stuff in the way. They can go in there and go to work.
And I will say, there are electrical outlets on the floor because it was set up similar to this. So whether they need to be moved two feet or maybe that are already in the right spots, there is already electrical outlets in the floor center of all of these areas.
And that was, that was my delayed response to that.
Right.
It's very well-equipped for what's being proposed. There might be minor...
Yeah, I mean, we can always like kind of, I mean, I know, like in, anyway, we need to just critique just a tiny bit, but there are wall out, or not wall, floor outlets, and we can always move those cubicles to like, you know, make the most of them, if you will.
Where the filing cabinets are, there are no floor outlets. We will have to put floor outlets in that.
On the right-hand side?
That's the one that's contiguous with the men's restroom and the storage. That is all wall outlets.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay, well, and I think also, so I don't know if you guys want to do a cubby wall?
I think that would be, okay, those are all walls. Okay, so this configuration's going to be just a little bit different. Hopefully it's going to look something similar to like a wall, wall, so, yeah, you're right, we would have to run from the wall length kind of to the floor.
From the ceiling downstairs. So this won't be your item, so you're okay with no control of entry?
Yeah, we, we did away with that, because the appraisers will be going over here to the building department and accessing the building plans a lot, and with a controlled entry here and here, and Cameron, I think we probably need one maybe here.
Right.
And that's not on there, but just little things. So hopefully, this back area right here, Sherri, will be more like this, so we'll have more walls in between the appraisers. But if we did come off, if we did come off the wall with the electricity, we could always run and run it down kind of like the cubby walls and then each, you know, give each person what you see or, I'm not an electrician.
You could do that.
That's what I'm wondering, if it's better to put walls in there first and then have the guys coming in. Because it's, I think a wonder if you actually put something on the ground, you're not necessarily sure.
That's what I mean, that's why I mean, if you go in there and you put your duct tape on the floor exactly where those walls are at, and then everybody can see, physically see, okay, this is what we need, this is where we need it.
I think that would also pull the chair, hopefully be able to...
Pull all the data stuff.
Is this, is this a necessity for storage for the building? Because that's a nice, well, I don't know. We got a lot of files, so we've got to have somewhere.
Well, and remember, are we, we're going to keep, we're going to do really tall walls with shelves kind of in this area here for you? And like, we are, but you have more stuff than just the plans, is that what you're saying?
We just have a lot of plans.
I, I know. It might be needed, it might not, I don't know.
And then it was to keep the table there in case we did have some meetings, but she would have her file cabinets in there. Remember upstairs, there, I mean, it's wide open upstairs for filing cabinets. Anything that you don't access daily, or, you know, that you'd access within a thirty-day period just goes upstairs.
That's what we're planning on.
And what made this a hundred percent for me was the little meeting room, because I need a place to lay our plots. I've got four different plat packages going on the table over here and getting our information in there. So that was, that made me a hundred percent.
And there's the central storage closet just behind the office room, that's a big storage area. I utilize my all...
Yeah, I know that we will probably need part of that space for our companion books and the textbooks that cartography uses daily. And now that we have a bigger area for cartography, you know, I, I told them, I said, start measuring and trying to figure out, you know, how you want to align, because I've got surveys and I mean, not everything is electronic. And do I have you?
So is there any fire protection for that storage just?
Is those companion books? Well, probably not. I don't know.
In that storage room? It should be put in a safe at night. That storage room right now is configured for employee desks. There's five workstations in there. So I'm going to assume that there would be fire protection in there, because it's set up as an employee room right now.
Oh, good. That storage room in the middle is what you're referring to?
Yeah, we're probably going to have to remove some stuff in there, because it's set up with a countertop desk that you can pull up next to.
It's, it's, it's an employee, yeah, workspace. It's being occupied.
Wouldn't help you if these guys came in and said, we don't need this wall, I mean, this wall, figure, you know, did you, did you look at that as, I wouldn't know which way to go, but till I saw what's there.
So, kind of just too quickly, there's, it sounds like there's actually a discussion, but just to be clear, there is a box right here, right in the middle, a lot of blocks, and then you have one here, 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 and there's one over here. So you have...
There's only one over there?
Only one right here.
Breaker panels?
I, I think there's more on that side.
Two more. No, they're in the offices.
So do we, if we don't need security so much, is that thing necessary where it says security, a little desk?
Well, it's already there.
Well, that's already there.
Yeah.
We just need really good signage, you know, assessor left, building department P and Z right, so people walk in, they can see just like they do here.
I personally am hoping, I really appreciate the fact that we have implemented security at the courthouse. I would still appreciate if we had some form of security. Does it have to be a certified patrol deputy? In, in my eyes, no, but maybe something...
I don't know what it would be.
We can maybe throw it over to the security committee to have that conversation.
Yeah.
We have two guys downstairs. I know one of them's got to go to court, though, every, now and when court's in.
It's going to be an additional of employees, or probably two or three of them, actually, because you always have to back up wherever you do.
We'd have one daily down there if that was the case.
That would include the... And that would include the, maybe the sheriff, you know, misdiscussion, because they may have a large group of retired or, you know, old police officers that want hard-time work. And this would work in great for them to stand there. I don't know about a magnetrometer, because that's a pretty spending purchase. But you could do a hand one.
Yeah.
It's not that much money, and if you've ever been through Hady County Courthouse, I'm telling you what.
Yeah.
You're almost down to your underwear before you get through there.
Thanks for that visual.
Little do they know.
Commissioners, if I might. It's out, again, if this is actual free wall, I don't know. This is something that can absolutely be codified in a floor plan, and then costed. But that's a reasonable next step for the group.
Everybody's on board, then.
Leaves, and then that way you can also have, you know, last-minute adjustments, if we need to add a secure entry, or do a cube wall instead of a hard wall, or, you know, contemplating those adjustments. But that way you could have a firm, actionable plan in front of you.
Yeah, so the, the wall, so the break room is there on the right, so the wall that comes down next to the appraisers there, it's a pretty long hallway. So are we proposing to put a solid wall there? Or just a high cubicle wall? What, what are?
Isn't that the wall I was just pointing to?
I'm not sure which one you were pointing to, it's kind of why I'm asking.
Yeah, it's created that hall, but it doesn't look like you need that with the layout that you have.
Well, so, well, it'd be, it'd be nice to have a barrier there, so people that are going back and forth in the hallway to the break room or back to the bathrooms, isn't a distraction.
So we have a six-foot partition wall there.
Six or eight foot would be just fine. I just, I think he would probably appreciate knowing that, if you're gonna work at costs.
For sure, yeah, so if anything that you see a hard wall, well, or a secured entry, right, so this, these are fixed.
Yeah.
See, that's what I was gonna say, on the, between building and P and Z. I don't know that those have to be built hard walls. I mean, just an eight foot.
Because I think if you.
Because then we can move them in the future. I mean, if we had to move it to four feet or something, you know, to adjust for something in the future, it's gonna be a lot easier.
But eight foot would allow the building department to get all their shelving there that they need.
Agreed.
And we could be. And I really think it would help with the sound carrying.
And you get eight foot movable walls?
I think it would, I think it would really be beneficial, because even with the, just, I'll speak for the appraisers, is when, when you're on the phone with taxpayers who are upset with you, and you're trying to help them and educate them, and, you know, what have you, it's, you can hear your neighbor's taxpayer screaming, you know, it's like.
Is this, and these are the ones?
Yeah, and, and, and so, yeah, those ones, and then the next one down. Yes, so the one up top is, I definitely would like, well, we can talk about the, how, how we want them.
Yeah.
Not waste anything.
Cameron, I think now that we have, you know, kind of the basic layout on what they want, I, I think a lot more is gonna fit in this building than what's here.
Yeah, that's.
So I think that we're gonna be, have a lot of open space.
And the flexibility to.
Yeah, yeah, with the electrical outlets, yeah.
As long as we don't build hard walls.
Right, right.
Just one other thing I wanted to infer, is this is actually gonna knock the current.
That, correct, that's all gonna be open for cartography. Because just.
The current layout? Have you seen the?
Has the desk all the way around.
Because that, that was a question I had for you, see, is it?
Uh, you know what?
Can you go back to it, Abby?
Cameron, you know what I would really like to do? Yeah, I would really like us to go ask cartography. Because they're the ones that have to work in that space. And so if you're free, we could go talk to them when you're done here.
Yeah.
If you wouldn't mind.
That'd be awesome.
Okay. Yep.
You know what I like most about this idea is the fact that if we decide we need to remodel treasures, we got a place for you to go temporarily. Do your, or if we end up having an office or part of this facility that's never used, we can move HR down. You have that option. We're taking our time, we're slowing it down, and kind of build it as we move it, and I think that's the best way to do this, honestly.
Yeah, you're, you're definitely, if we're going, you know, partition walls as opposed to fixed, you're really giving yourself a lot of future. And again, there's nothing in this that's gonna be accommodated and make sure that these needs are.
And Cameron, you'll let us know as far as handicap stuff in the bathrooms and stairs, and all that's gonna be considered as well.
Yep, that'll all come in the design set of plans.
Do you need, you have an action item to do what?
This was a workshop.
You're, you're, I would, we would appreciate any direction that you can give. So basically, it would be to go forward with the department's plan, and get that kind of, a, a good final floor plan there, and then get that costed. Would be, in our view, the next step for you all to.
So we are in agreement up here for just the three departments moving.
Yep, yeah, that would be the main question, based off of option A, today. So what's the?
So we also have the basement. And I don't know, Brian, I think we showed you guys the basement layout of adding a.
You go to that, Abby?
Where you guys.
Zoom in on that with the.
We added, right next to the men's restroom, another office in there, a glass partition, you're okay with that?
Yeah, so Brian, it's this here. Needs two.
And we'll put a glass partition in the middle, and then do the doors. And then as far as future, he'll just, he'll let you know. So both of the Brian's offices and that little storage cabinet can be combined for actually a third office space in there, should it ever be needed. For now, if we just add that office, then that, that works for the basement, so make sure I include that in any cost estimates.
So why does mine say we're gonna name it the Elt Hadtrick Memorial Building?
No. That was, glad you brought that up.
Oh, that's probably the action part of this, right?
The clerk's office would like it to be named, but we'd like the commissioners to think about it, and. Valley County Business Complex. Right now, we're calling it the Amerititle Building. We're calling it the.
I think we should do it normally.
What it should be?
For house annex. If, if you have, like.
We already have a courthouse annex. What are we considering, that the McCall Annex?
Cascade Annex.
How about?
Cascade Annex.
Cascade courthouse annex, because if, if it has the name courthouse in it, depending on what the stipulations are for the Sheriff's Department, if it's still considered a courthouse, he may be able to. Staff it with jailers rather than patrol deputies. I don't know, we'd have to ask him.
I ponder, commissioners.
Well, that's me, I just, you know, that's A part one.
Whatever, that's just my.
I like the Cascade South. That's kind of confusing to people. I don't know, I think we need to let Mabel make that decision. Mabel! Jesus.
Plugged into the matrix.
She's like, nope, I'm busy.
I like the Cascade Annex, too, but let's see what, what we need to include in that. I don't know if you can just put courthouse into something, or if there's not a court.
I don't know, we'd have to ask.
I guess the prosecuting attorney office is down there, so their law might have something to do.
Putting delineation of courthouse on it tells you it's part of the courthouse.
That's just my thoughts, I mean, I.
It's a thought, but I don't think it'll work. We don't have any courts down there.
DA's down there.
There's a lot of different names you could come up with, maybe we should do a hothouse survey, it's a, like a Cascade Business Center, or.
Well.
County Business Center.
Been brainstorming on it.
We could do, we could do a little.
Somebody a free.
Pool of all the departments. Have a naming. We're happy to help with the survey. Easy for you guys, that's totally easy for us.
One thing that we are gonna have to really look at is gonna be the cost of that parking lot and the addition of the employees' faces. So we do need to include that in any cost estimates, and we're gonna do so, you know exactly what we're spending.
Was Dan already working on that, though?
I don't know.
You may want to ask Dan about that, because he, he, we kind of slowed that down, messed things up, but kind of slowed that down when we did that. Get that all torn up and expand, so there's plenty of parking for.
We know how many parking spaces are there now?
No, not from the schematic, it doesn't say.
I don't think.
Ours was just, just the interior of the building. We can certainly look at that if you'd like us to.
I could check it down and see, don't want to do double duty here, but if he hadn't done it, maybe put you on, on that.
It'd be something to do on the way home, go up, per land, and see how many's there, but. We may, we may have enough, now that the treasure's not going.
Send it, here's a table you can take with you.
Are we good to roll with that, commissioners?
You guys getting rid of this?
You guys good?
Yep. Everybody's coming, with their own, you know, if everybody's on board. I hate that the treasure doesn't get to go down there, too, honestly, but hopefully someday we'll be able to build something out here and put everybody back together again.
And I like that she's staying up.
Thank you for your sacrifice, Joanna, I'd willingly do it myself.
Go through the gym.
She doesn't want to move either, but it's too bad.
I worry about people that have to drive to the gym to work out.
I don't know how Sandra's gonna do that, I mean, she's gonna have fingernail marks as she leaves the building.
I love my.
No, you know, it's, it's okay, I mean, I moved from there to here, we'll go down there, it'll be okay.
That's right.
Everything's good.
You used to be over near the extension, is, yeah, I forgot about that one last year.
Yes, and they moved us right in the middle of it.
Wow.
It was a super busy time.
Need some big change.
Cherry papers.
Hey, there's nothing else, we're about out of time. Thanks for coming up.
Yep, we'll get back with you, get the, the codified plan, and get that cost estimation to you as well.
Thanks, Cameron.
You bet, I think Cameron's like, hey.
Get some chocolate, feed it.
She always that quiet?
Can you have a, yes, yes, she is. Can I roll it up for you? Um, no, because I want to go over a couple of things with Cameron, maybe we can go upstairs.
Okay.
You don't want anything I do to you.
Why this young lady?
Thank you, Sue.
Yes.
Thank you all.
Take care.
Thank you, Cameron.
I liked it when it was longer.
Oh, yeah.
Armel. There you go.
Miss Turtle.
Hey, before we move on to our next agenda item, I'm gonna ask the people in the audience, are you guys here for a particular agenda item?
Yes.
Which one?
Um, the Rogers.
Roger's setback. And you guys here, too? Well, hate to be the bearer of bad news, we have an executive in front of that, that's next on our agenda, so I'm gonna have to ask you to leave. Looks like it's only about a 20-minute executive. Welcome to wait out in the hall or whatever, but this is for to communicate with our legal, and then you guys are next on the agenda. Okay? So at this time, I'm gonna make the motion that we go into an executive session. Right, I hold code 742061F, to communicate with legal, do I have a second?
Second.
The motion is second by roll call, please. I'm sent aye.
Uh, Mop and I?
That's Rick, I, and Doug, we are gonna be in at 2:10.